Why would you want?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm asking, well, once the agenda goes up, you can't see either people talking. So if you want to see the people talking, you want to.
People to close all of the space. Yes, no, no, I don't, and neither do they. I am not signing on Zoom as a public speaker. All right, see, I'm good, all right, good. But it's distracting, it is, like if you're looking at yourself.
We have some new things up here for how to turn your computer.
Sure, maybe that makes some electricity on my office.
It's not going to turn your microphone.
Ready the behind scenes for two minutes.
It will squeal, I agree.
Mark, how do you read that?
Oh, it's usually.
Yep, but she has it all.
I'm sorry.
You're signing that out there.
Because there's yours was. Oh, yeah, but you guys are using normal sound, but was it, you can see otherwise.
And usually having, and usually having doesn't have to be correct. Oh, that's true.
Well, because I thought we wouldn't see him from the other.
Well, it's a little smaller.
So even if we zoom in, I can do these microphones.
Yeah, yeah. You have to make sure you're muted, you're, it's not enough just to turn your microphone.
Yeah, yeah.
Jack, can you show you how to do it?
Water.
I know, I'm gonna, this is how you think it's easy, easy.
Well, it makes sense.
Just that one, just that one. Oh, I know.
That's hard for you there. When you don't put that down. That's the team. Oh, no.
This is.
I share.
Well, we're only taking.
Hey, and for us, it's, I mean, I'm sorry.
So we sign, we sign it.
Okay, okay.
You don't need to go far, we don't need to.
Just want you guys. Good evening, everyone, welcome to our June 14 Town Council meeting. Before we get started, I just want to let everyone know we are live streaming and hydrated in person again. So before we begin, I just need to go through the evacuation route in the event of an emergency. You have the exit doors to the right, also have one front here. We will exit the building, we'll meet across the street at the school administration building and wait for the construction. And now, if we could all stand for the pledge allegiance and honor of the South. Supreme Court. The United States of America, the United Republic of America, the United States of America, my nation, my mother. The United States of America, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. A little bit more housekeeping. For those of you who are waiting at home via Zoom, or on the phone, on Zoom, you can hit the raise your hand icon. Call upon, if you're on the phone, it's star six that you can unmute your phone, star nine to let us know. Got a question, when called upon, please state your name and address for the Town Clerk. Now, we'll turn it over to the Town Clerk for a roll call.
Ms. Ujihusa, present. Ms. Abbott?
Present.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah.
Hamilton?
I am here.
Mr. Kelly, you're top of mind?
Here.
Mr. Aguirre?
Here.
Excellent, welcome all, it's great to see some of you folks back here at Town Hall. Today was their first day fully reopened at Town Hall. Almost back to normal. But that's okay, onto our President, we got your summary. We will begin with our consent agenda. Bills and federal books.
Both approve, that's present.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Hi, Ms. Abbott? Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next, we'll be sitting at support license commissioners. I do have to note that we're accusing on the first two. Hope we could maybe do those two.
I will make a motion to approve both the vicarious license and the entertainment license of Portuguese, portion of Portuguese American citizens as well. For their annual piece by July 15th through the next. Please be aware of that.
Seven.
We've got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Hi. Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Ryan?
Hi.
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero. Now onto the next, next we have the feathers license. And LLC, EDA, so. Go prove. All of them.
Ms. Ujihusa? Hi. Ms. Abbott?
How?
Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. And next, we have old work Patriots West LLC, EDA, Patriot Controller. Those questions, and the same holiday license.
Just to let you know, the reason they're on is because they're being sold to one of the partners is buying out the other and because it's not, it's half the heavy.
No one has written any objections to this. Who approve of the control of licenses? Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Hi. Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. Move to adjourn to the board of license commission. Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Hi. Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan's?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we'll be moving on to the town administrator's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to COVID-19, please note that the COVID test center that we stop and shop for will permanently close at the end of this month. The last day for testing at that site will be June 26. Additionally, there was word this morning that the vending site for the COVID vaccinations will also close at the end of the month. Additionally, in accordance with the governor's executive order, we will still allow remote participation in town council meetings. We are awaiting action on proposed legislation at the state level to find out if this will becoming permanent feature of the Open Meetings Act. And lastly, we will conduct our final COVID pod vaccination pod clinic on Friday at the Portland High School for the administration of second doses to 12 to 15 year olds. First doses will also be offered, but second doses will have to be arranged for independently. The clinic will be conducted from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Respect to the senior center, staff, town council representatives, community members of the senior center advisory group. The senior center director and the senior center board chair met with church community representatives to tour other properties developed by church community. And last week, met with Union Studios architects and DARBO surveying to discuss what features should exist in a new building to best serve members of the senior center. The architect and surveyor will take the requests and suggestions and present possible plans to the advisory group at their next meeting. As noted at the town budget hearing, I anticipate the receipt of the architecture report on cost to renovate the Anne Hutchinson Building this week. And will schedule an update for the consultant to brief the council at the earliest opportunity. With respect to National Grid, National Grid has submitted their sighting report and their application to the energy facility sighting board for use of the liquid natural gas portable equipment at Old Mill Lane. As briefed to the council in a prior meeting, the purpose of the application is to address the existing gap between gas demand and existing gas capacity on extremely cold days. And maintain the ability to address capacity vulnerability while engaging in an analysis of long-term solutions to address the island's gas needs. The sighting board, the energy facility sighting board of the EFSP has not docketed the application yet, so it's not available on our website. But it is included in correspondence to the council on this agenda. And then lastly, town hall employees have now had the opportunity to become fully vaccinated. The building is now open for walk-in business, and we are asking all visitors to enter from the south end of the building. That's the end closest to the chambers that we're sitting in now. Additionally, we ask all visitors to adhere to the new mask requirements, i.e. if you are fully vaccinated, you do not need to wear a mask. However, who are not vaccinated, we ask that you wear a mask and maintain at least three foot separation. Social distancing, and that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Okay. Moving on to resignations and appointments, we have a resignation on the Harvard Commission. Move to accept Mr. David's resignation with regret. Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Hi. Ms. Abbott? Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have appointments, we have a reappointment. In the conservation commission. What's happening just there? All those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. And we have design review boards. So comments. Both approve. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Hi. Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. And next, we have for the economic development committee. We have.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. I've been asked by Mr. Tilitsky to request, make a motion, that the appointment not be for what is currently in the bylaws, which would be from September 1st to August 31st. But instead, my motion would be to change the appointment of the year member to June 14th, August 31st. Otherwise, it would have very short term, June 14th to August 31st, so. Like, does that make sense?
Do you just want to go through next year?
Correct, starting now.
Fourteen months. Seven, ready.
Okay.
Excellent. We're all listening. So we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Hi. Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. And next, we have the Harvard Commission.
No, and so that was to change the term, wasn't it? Or was it the change in term and?
No, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, regarding the petition?
Yes.
There, uh, two, there's going to be, that have not been active, so on the next agenda, they're going to be asked to be moved. So it was asked that Mr. Ramson be placed first, and then Mr. Lawrence Walsh should be.
Why won't we daily leave today?
Technically, yes.
So we are voting to approve Mr. Ramson to take the place of. Abilavacy. Abilavacy.
Yes.
Left by Mr. David. Yeah. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. And we're not proposing Mr. Walsh.
That will be on.
They're going to, yes, we're not voting. Oh. Well, get to that to left here, so we got to pay. Right, right.
They're going to have to.
I know, okay. And how we can, okay. Now, and just getting into the, okay. No problem. All right. Under all business. We have the enforcement aggregation update. And we have.
Evening, councilors. Richard Tilitsky, 79, Cromwell, Reverend, Director of Business Development, can you hear me okay?
We can, hold on, it's supposed to, we can hardly hear you.
Okay, try to get closer to the microphone. In June of last year, the town council approved, going forward to the PUC for an energy aggregation plan. In August, the town council conducted a public hearing for that plan. Due to COVID, the filing with the PUC has been delayed, so we thought it was prudent to give the council an update on the plan. Of note is that the council has not given us any approval for any contract or any bidding for energy aggregation, just for the plan itself. We have with us today Daria Mark from our consultant, Good Energy, and I'm going to turn the discussion over to her.
Great, thank you so much, how's my sound?
Coming through loud and clear.
Perfect, could we bring up the presentation, the overview PDF? I think it is the second document, yes, perfect. So I'm here to give a brief overview of the program. Next slide, please. So Good Energy, our experience is one in 10 years managing aggregations. We have 53 clients in Massachusetts, six in Rhode Island, which was included, one in Hampshire, and 44 active programs in Massachusetts. Currently, we're working with Providence, Central Falls, Portsmouth, Barrington, Newport, and South Kingston. Providence, Central Falls, Barrington, and South Kingston just have their plans, and now I guess to the one we're discussing tonight, approved by the Public Utilities Commission. And we pioneered the idea of adding additional renewable energy into your aggregation with green energy consumers alliance, a nonprofit whom some of you may know. Next slide, please. So as a kind of background and base for what is electricity aggregation, it's important to understand there's two parts to your electricity. There is delivery and supply. Delivery always stays with the utility, so that's always national grid, so that's the trucks, the poles, the wires, the maintenance. Power goes out, you still call it national grid. And national grid also continues to do all the billing, so in, in a lot of visual ways, the program stays the same. You still, all the participants still receive a single bill, it still says national grid, and all the delivery things stay the same. But the one place where you can make a change is the supply, and so that's what you're choosing. So town of Portsmouth can go create this program for which the plan has been written and offer different choices. So obviously, everybody meets the state requirements, but then you have more local control over what is happening with the supply portion. So that's where you can make a choice, next slide, please. So there's some goals to the electricity program. One is allowing individuals and small businesses to benefit from the competitive electricity market. So what that means is there's large industrial customers, cities and towns that have a lot of electricity that they use. Will go out to competitive market and say, we have this, you know, large load of electricity, what's a good price? And individual consumers can't really do that one at a time, we just don't use enough electricity. But if you group a lot of people together, thousands of people together, then you do, then you really get that, that bulk advantage. Rate stability is another benefit of the program, you can add renewable energy as Portsmouth plan poses. And you can expand consumer choice because you can add different supply options, you're not just stuck with the one that just basically meets the state requirements. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the competitive pricing comes in with market timing. Unlike a utility, we are not required to go to the market and bid at a certain time, we can choose advantageous time. And as I mentioned before, when you're aggregating, the electricity use of thousands of people, you get that buying power. And I just do want to note, because we can't predict the future, we can't guarantee savings against last resort service, but these programs are built to be competitive. Next slide, please. Price stability is another benefit I mentioned, unlike utility rates, which change every six months, the program can choose to have longer periods of stable pricing. 12 months, 24 months, 36 months, we'll see what feels favorable and what looks favorable based on bidding. Next slide, please. Another really important goal is to use and support renewable energy, solar, wind, as close to Rhode Island as possible, as, and certainly within the New England borders. Next slide, please. Expanding consumer choice is another really big important benefit of this program is that you can, before, you just had national grid, last resort service, or you had third-party individual offers. But with the aggregation program, you could have multiple options, you can have one that just meets the requirements at state, you could have a standard product that adds more renewables, and you could have opt-up products, 100% to 50%, as Portsmouth plan describes. Next slide, please. So this is an example from one of our active aggregation programs in Somerville, Massachusetts. We had to add a little, the bubble that's in the middle to show where the program renewed, because the price stayed effectively the same. But the Somerville program did what is Portsmouth is looking to do also in their standard default product, they added first 5% and then 10% extra renewable energy. And very, you could see the results, the, the, the blue line that goes like a squiggle, that's the, that's the basic service from the utility, as it's called in Massachusetts. And then the orange line is the Somerville program. Through both contracts, first the 5% and then the renewal at the 10%. Next slide, please. And then I want to just quickly give an overview of the participant experience. So the program has voluntary participation with automatic enrollment, and so what does that mean? Voluntary participation means that people can leave the program at any time they choose. It's, there's no penalty or fee to leave at any time, there is no contract. There's a letter that goes out at the beginning that notifies folks that the program is starting, they have 30 days to make a decision. And you can leave then, you can leave once the program starts, again, no penalty, no contract. And for the automatic enrollment, so anyone in Portsmouth can participate in the program, but only those who haven't chosen a supplier previously are eligible for automatic enrollment. And that's because if you've chosen a supplier before, you've made a decision and we are not going to change your supplier. But those who are still in last resort service, they will get the option to join the program and be automatically enrolled if they choose to stay. And then, I guess I mentioned before, National Grid continues to handle all the billing, so when folks, it doesn't matter if you get a paper bill or electronic bill, folks open their bill, it still looks the same. The only change would be the tiny little line that says supplier, we changed from National Grid to the program to stay and participate. And if the power goes out, National Grid is still a place to call. It doesn't, and the program doesn't affect any net metering, so that's for those of you, solar panels on roofs, or any local discount rates that are available to folks right now. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. So this is what you, this was just an update, correct? There you're not, there's not, no action required from the council?
That's correct, the plan is available, if you go on our town website and search for aggregation, there's a webpage that has all the documents available in addition to the ones that we put for your backup. Our requirement is to come to the town council periodically to give you an update. As soon as the PUC hearing is complete, then we'll go into an education and outreach program for the community to educate them. We will go out to bid, come back with an energy rate, and then the town council can make a decision on whether to accept that rate or not. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Motion to receive it, please. Second.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks so much for your time.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujihusa? Hi. Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bellmeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero. Again, thank you, Mr. Tilitsky, thank you, Ms. Mark, for the update, and we will look forward to the next step. Okay. Next, we are moving on to whole business number two. The approval for the Ryan stage two submission. I've had to do this a lot, Dr. Ken Corrigan's before us, have not had someone live.
Now, look at this, huh? Thank you. This is Ripper, do you have the names of the individuals who will be helping the presentation, okay?
They're all.
Okay. You have a few minutes, I'm going to go through an introduction here. You have a few minutes. I'm going to go through an introduction here. Well said. Okay. Good evening, council members, and thank you for having me here tonight to present on behalf of the school department. Tonight, we come before you seeking approval for our Stage Two five-year facilities capital plan. This is the final step needed to allow us to submit this plan to the Rhode Island Department of Education for authorization. As was discussed during our most recent budget process, school districts are required to maintain a minimum level of spending each year on facilities. The work we will be discussing in each project tonight is what has been identified as some of our most critical needs for each of our buildings. Simply put, this is work that will need to be done over the next few years. Without an approved five-year plan on file with the state of Rhode Island, towns are not eligible to receive housing aid reimbursement for school facilities projects. As you may recall, I came before you with a similar request in January of 2020. At that time, the school department was seeking approval for a Stage Two submission that represented the culmination of 18 months of planning and preparation. This project would have resulted in major renovations to all four of us, our schools, and ultimately cost $65 million with significant reimbursement incentives available. Although the council granted approval for that proposal, the plan was ultimately withdrawn when technical issues arose regarding ownership of a parcel of land on the Melville School property. We were informed that that issue would need to be fully resolved before Ride could grant approval for our previous Stage Two submission. To date, I believe we are still awaiting the final documentation from the federal government regarding that land transaction. And once our previous submission was withdrawn in March of 2020, I think everyone remembers, the attention of our district and our world became focused on COVID-19. That brings us to the fall of 2020. Our school committee authorized the reconvening of our district building committee, consisting of school department and town representatives, including Mr. Aguirre, Mr. Buttermeyer, Mr. Rayner and Mr. Crosby. The building committee met throughout the fall into December of 2020 with assistance from Colliers, our district's project manager, and Studio Jade, our district's architectural consultant for this Stage Two process. The result is the plan that comes before you this evening. A $21.4 million project, which will result in significant health and safety upgrades to all four of our schools, while enabling the town to take advantage of reimbursement incentives that are still available from Ride. This plan was approved by our school committee on May 25, 2021. And with your approval this evening, will be submitted to Ride in advance of its January, excuse me, July 1 deadline. At this time, I'm going to turn our presentation over to Mr. Chris Spiegel from Colliers to walk us through the details of the projects. At the completion of that portion of the presentation, I believe Mr. Rayner will lead the potential bond discussion along with the town's bond advisor. At the conclusion of the entire presentation, Mr. Spiegel, his partner, Ms. Holly DeMares from Colliers, along with Mr. Phil Conti from Studio Jade, myself and Mr. Giro from the school department will be available for any questions. This time, I think we're ready with the presentation and we can turn things over to Mr. Spiegel.
Chris? Thank you very much, Superintendent. Just a quick mic check. Can everybody hear me okay? Great. So again, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present to Portsmouth tonight. What we have before you are just a few slides, which will walk you through sort of the process that we've been going through that Superintendent Kenworthy just just touched on, as well as the program costs and the program schedule, and then a few details of some specific projects that we plan for the next four years. Next slide please. So the agenda, as I said, first will be a process overview. Second, we'll break down the program costs. Third, we'll talk about the program schedule. We'll present a quick cash flow analysis and again, some individual project highlights. So as this, as this group is aware, the Ride necessity of construction application process is multi-step. The Stage One was submitted far before this, almost over 18 months ago. And what I have before you guys today is just what we've been doing the last few months and, you know, in concert with school department as well as school committee leadership. We submitted schematic design documents to our third-party cost estimator. We reviewed those cost estimates, revised them based on what the program specifics were, compiled our operating budget analysis and presented to the school committee. This was approved by the capital subcommittee on 5/19/21 and approved by the school committee on 5/25. In addition to the regular school building committee and facilities committee meetings, we've had additional planning meetings with school department leadership and school committee leadership. And again, we plan on, if this application is approved today by the town council, we plan on submitting to Ride in the next few days. So what you have before you right now is the program and cost breakdown. It's important to note that these pricing was determined by third-party cost estimators based on current market rates. All projects before you will qualify for a 5% bonus reimbursement incentive and projects will be grouped together to maximize value through a combined procurement. We're also looking at a potential return on investment to the district. In fact, one of the projects which we'll touch on a little bit later today is forecasting a 30% energy reduction for the HVAC systems. At Hathaway Elementary School, we propose a new elevator, renovated bathrooms for both floors, HVAC improvements and added air conditioning, new secondary electrical service to support the HVAC and asbestos floor tile replacement for a subtotal of $7 million, $7.3 million. At Melville, a roof replacement, renovated bathrooms, HVAC improvements and air conditioning, again, electrical service to support that HVAC and another asbestos tile replacement. At the middle schools, we look to renovate both bathrooms. And at the high school, again, renovated bathrooms in the cafeteria, asbestos floor tile replacement, roadway improvement, Memorial Drive and air conditioning, the field house. Looking at a minimum housing aid reimbursement at 35% of $7.5 million and an additional health and safety bonus of an additional 1.071 million, looking for a total of $8,575,000 in Ride reimbursement with a total net cost to the district of $12,863,000. Looking again for a bond financing amount of $21,439. And before we move to the next slide, just quickly, you'll notice a theme with these projects and that is all of these projects are specifically targeted for health and safety. The reason that we chose health and safety projects is twofold. One, it represents the district's most critical needs in terms of keeping students warm, safe and dry and equitable. And the second is that the housing aid bonus is scheduled to go away in a few years for health and safety projects. So it's important that we get this work done sooner rather than later, while it still qualifies for bonus reimbursement points. Also, there's the potential on this for the field house AC to also generate revenue to help offset costs. We were in discussions previously with school committee and school building committee, school facilities, capital subcommittee leadership. They did mention that having air conditioning in the field house could potentially turn over some revenue for the district. Next slide please. This is the proposed program schedule. Again, we've grouped these projects together by year and also by project type in order to maximize value for the district. The idea is that we'll save on mobilization costs by awarding to 1GC groups of projects. As currently shown, we have five sets of projects. The first, year 2021, would be ACM rebate abatement as one project. And then the field house air conditioning as a second project. In 2022, or sorry, summer of 2023, we would be looking at bathroom renovations as one project across all the schools, as well as the memorial drive replacement as a separate project. And then the summer of 2024, we'd be looking at a combined project for all four projects, the roof replacement, the HVAC upgrades and the Hathaway elevator. We proposed this because usually when there is work done with HVAC systems, as is as is in this case, we will need to do some cuts in the roof in order to make way for those new opportunesses. By grouping these projects together, again, we save on mobilization, we save on bidding costs and we maximize value for the district. It's important to note that these projects, again, are are dependent on bond referendum vote being approved by the constituents of the district. We're looking for that vote in November of 2021, as well as a council approval from the council on primary and secondary education in December of 2021. Design will start immediately afterwards, bringing these projects from schematic design where we currently have them to full construction document design. We have picked the projects for the first summer of 2022 based on the shorter design cycle that we have for those projects. The asbestos abatement, the tile abatement are, the scope of design is much smaller than some of the other projects, including bathroom renovations and HVAC projects, as well as air conditioning of the field house. Because of the open structure of that building, the HVAC design work will be minimal. So that's why those projects have been front-loaded into the front year. Some of the projects that are more design-heavy have been pushed to the back of the schedule for 2024 and the bathroom renovations are scheduled for 2023. Next slide please. So again, based on the numbers we pulled from a professional third-party cost estimator, we're looking at an overall cost to the district of $21,439,299. That does not include the Ride reimbursement rate. Of that, we expect around $2 million to be spent in FY '23, $9 million to be spent in FY '24 and $10 million spent in FY '25. Next slide please. And then we're just to quickly touch on some individual project highlights. Phil from Studio Jade, the president of Studio Jade, feel free to interject if you have any points. The first project we'll be going over is Memorial Drive Improvement Projects. Next slide please. Thank you. So as you see here, this is a preliminary schematic design for the Memorial Drive Improvements Project. You may have noticed that the price for the Memorial Drive Improvements Project was much more than your typical retaining project. The reason for that is is twofold. The first is that the amount of impervious space that we're going to be adding to the Memorial Drive due to the added parking spaces, I believe it's about 25, as well as the added concrete sidewalks for safety, will trigger a Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management review. It is our experience, as well as the architect's experience, that during those reviews, Ride DEM does require you to put stormwater management in for the district. With Portsmouth's position in the East Bay and the environmental considerations, we do expect there to be some some stormwater management that will need to be added to this project. Again, this project is critical for health and safety. I've been told anecdotally by members of school department leadership as well as school committee leadership that especially during the winter, this road can pose a hazard for students crossing the street. This would alleviate that providing a sidewalk and also adding some, you know, extra parking that could be used at all times, including when we have games over the summers and during the fall.
Hey, Chris, this is Phil. The only thing I would add, because it's slightly off of this image, is that we are improving the vehicular circulation and visitor parking at the main entrance to the main office of the high school as well.
Thanks, Phil. Next slide please. And for the HVAC improvements from Melville and Hathaway, the scope of work will include new ventilation and air conditioning within each school. And every single student occupied space will be touched by this project, including the, including the gym areas. Environmental conditions will exceed what the most recent guidances, and this is coming out of COVID-19, the most recent guidances put out by the International Mechanical Code. Again, we're forecasting a 30% energy reduction in the HVAC systems usage. And of course, we've taken the most recent COVID guidance into into account during the design process. And again, the plan is to maximize value by awarding to 1 CMGC. And just one overarching also theme of all this work is that, yes, it's health and safety work. But the second point of the why we chose this work is that it will not have an adverse effect in case the district does in two or three, four, five years decide that they want to make some of the more programmatic changes that Superintendent Kenworthy brought up, including renovations in addition to the schools. This last thing we want to do is put money into these schools and then have to redo it five years later. So when these projects were chosen by by leadership, it was a first, as Phil likes to say, a do no harm strategy. So that anything that we do now, we will not have to undo in a few years' time in case the district does want to proceed with some of those larger, more programmatic changes. Phil, do you have any extra comments on these?
Sure, sure. It's important to note that at Melville and Hathaway, we are capitalizing on a recent investment in new boilers at both of those schools. We incorporated them into the system that we are proposing.
So the next slide is for questions, but I believe will hold until the, until after your financial consultant makes their presentation. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to check if we wanted to go right into the bond portion or if you wanted to take questions on the project.
Maybe we should just focus on a couple of project questions. Because then it locks up the
Sure.
Do you have any questions? I just have just a couple, just a couple of quick questions and really just for clarification. The the cost estimates that it provided, it was a statement that those were based on the current market rates. How are we projecting out for 2024, 2025? Is there an escalation in there?
So yes, that that's a great question. So yes, escalation is considered based on the program schedule of when we plan to do the projects. For some of these projects, escalation, you know, really isn't isn't that much of a factor in terms of, you know, moving asbestos abatement and things like that. While prices can fluctuate, generally, they remain steady. Luckily, most of the projects that you guys actually have aren't directly tied to any any overall material cost that we've seen specific rises to recently. There's not a lot of wood. One thing that will benefit this this project grouping is that our plan for Memorial Drive improvements has been pushed out a year. Currently asphalt prices are incredibly high right now due to the rise in gas prices. So, you know, hopefully things things will, you know, drop down. But yes, escalation in general is considered for these projects.
Okay, great. Last question. In the total amount that this presented, the 21 million, does that also include your the soft costs, like the construction oversight, engineering permitting, are all those factors are part of that?
So yes, that, thank you. That's a great question. Sorry for not explaining that earlier. The cost estimates provided do account for 20% soft costs as is allowed by Ride. In those soft costs, you also will be getting a contingency. Sorry. So yes, in those, so in those prices, yes, you do have 20% soft costs in there, which includes your architect, your permitting, third-party consultants, a contingency in case, you know, added scope wants to go back in based on bidding. So yes, you do have a soft cost included in those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Just have a general question about when is the Melville the ownership question expected to be?
So Rayner may have some more details on that. And that will not affect any of the work related to these projects, just.
This no longer affects the application. That part of the project is is no longer being said, but with respect to that property. The Navy has, we're talking about the property right next to Melville School, where the old Anthony House, or referred to as the old Adels House, is located. That property has now it's been turned over to Bellport, the Navy's housing agent. They, the Navy does agree that they will do the lead abatement and then make a determination on the demolition of property and then turn over to the property to the and right now, and again, this is all being worked out between the attorneys. The proposal will be a payment and rule of tax turnover.
Sort of overarching question I have, and maybe my memory isn't quite super clear. But when we had those meetings early on to discuss the earlier plan that was $65 million, it felt like there was more emphasis on what would happen at the middle school, things that needed to happen at the middle school. And now we're looking at a plan that all pays towards very like the least at the middle school. And I'm wondering if you sort of gave a 30,000 foot view of why that happened?
Sure, you're absolutely right. So that $65 million plan from a few, you know, you built up a few years ago. Middle school is a major focus of that, right? Because we were going to be trying to move fifth grade or keep fifth grade, however you look at it, at the elementary schools, right, that would have required additions to Melville Hathaway. And then we were going to, you know, open up the middle school, if you will, into And then we were going to, you know, open up the middle school, if you will, into, you know, what we were considering a more twenty first century friendly teaching and learning environment. So that may still be something down the road that we look at. But, you know, as we've indicated, when we were putting this project together, we made the decision to focus on health and safety items. Again, we looked at, we basically started by taking what those health and safety items were related to each school in the previous plan. So while the middle school had a lot of, you know, the most focus, you're correct, in the previous plan, a lot of that was related to, you know, the reconfiguring of classroom spaces and moving some things around. So health and safety wise, you know, renovated bathrooms are the main thing at the middle school.
And also, basically, was there much talk about other changes and facility needed efforts? Because the other big thing I think I remember is that the high school wanted to have a connector between the old gym and the food gym, you know, so you don't have to go outside to get to the food gym. Is that something?
Yeah, again, that could be something if we, you know, decide to take a look at, you know, incorporating things to a larger plan at some point. I think that would certainly be something we would like to do in the future. And we were pinpointing to the health and safety projects. It just wasn't, you know, it didn't make the list of of those projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, you have a. End up in the audience. We could just.
Hello, Tom Greve, one ten Thayer Drive. Can you hear me?
You got you.
Okay, great. This year's school bond project list spans three years. Last year's spanned five. So from a project timeframe point of view, these two submissions very closely coincide. Something would, if something was important last year, it should be on the list this year. If something is on the list this year but was not on the list last year, it's logical to ask why. It turns out that ten of the fifteen projects on this year's cash flow matrix were not on last year's bond list. That equates to two thirds of all the projects. And those projects account for about three quarters of the money to be bonded this year. That has to make someone ask, how can school priorities change so drastically and so quickly? For example, last bond submission, we needed a new roof and windows at the middle school. Sounds like health and safety to me. This time, it is not even mentioned. However, we now need a new roof on the Melville Elementary School, and that was not on the project list last year. In this bond, over half the money is going to HVAC, which was not even on the radar last year. I distinctly remember Mr. Hamilton asking about AC for the field house and being told it was not a priority. This complete one eighty does not make a lot of sense to me. Would the AC at the field house make that building a town shelter if needed? I would certainly support that project if it did. The town presently does not have a shelter if our if our residents need one. Last time, we were relocating the fifth grade to the elementary school for a better, more age appropriate educational experience. Better performance at the middle school was also predicted. This year, that is not on the list. But we did keep the bathroom projects to the tune of four point five million dollars. Think about that. Four point million to update school bathrooms. That's almost half of what we spent to build the entire police station. Why are these bathrooms so expensive? The walls and plumbing already exist. Furthermore, I believe our kids would be much better served putting up with outdated bathrooms than a poor educational experience. I'd like to hear some justification for putting bathroom updates on a higher priority than a better better educational experience for our students. I fully support Portsmouth having great schools, and my family education has always come first. However, the priorities in this bond submission raise a lot of questions for me, and I believe for other residents too. I asked the council to have the school committee reevaluate what they are asking for in light of the anomalies that just cited between their last two submissions and to come back with thoughtful justifications for a change in the submissions. Thank you.
Yeah, there was a lot there. I'll do I'll do my best with trying to go through it. You know, I think as Mr. Green pointed out, there there were many things in the last submission that did not make the list this time. Again, as I think we've explained, when when we reconvene the building committee in in the fall of twenty twenty, our focus became health and safety items. So there are certain, you know, requirements for projects to meet that designation for health and safety. Again, we we made that the focus to kind of reduce the scope of the project. COVID certainly was making us rethink some of the, you know, ideas, if you will, that went into the original design. You know, each the HVAC systems at Melville and Hathaway are a great example of that. I would say, yeah, the the biggest reason for the shift to those two systems making the list this time, if you will, when we decided to focus on health and safety items was COVID, absolutely, and things that we learned. We did extensive testing of our facilities as we were getting ready to reopen. And, you know, Melville and Hathaway, while they were rated acceptable, we were able to open school, right, as we've we've had since the beginning of the year. Comparatively speaking of the four schools, those were the two lowest, if you will, in the ratings that came out. So the the high school and the middle school, while they have, you know, their own share of facility needs, the HVAC systems were actually rated a little higher than Melville and Hathaway. So that, you know, we we would have loved to have focused on all four HVAC systems. But again, when the building committee was meeting and trying to whittle down the projects into what we were, you know, were trying to land at, you know, what we were hoping would be an acceptable number, you know, it just made sense to focus on those two HVAC systems. I don't know if Chris or Phil wanted to add anything.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would just add that the, you know, a lot of the work at the middle school and the elementaries in our last plan, or the educational enhancements, they were all contingent on moving grade five from the middle school to the elementaries, which again was contingent on that piece of property so that we could do the additions without having that, and none of that was possible. And the last thing we wanted to do was to go into the middle school, do renovations, and then maybe at some point in the future, be able to have that property, move grades around, and then have to undo what we'd already spent money on. So that that was the thinking behind that one. Those are those are my thoughts. I don't know, Phil, if you had anything on that.
Sure. One thing I can add is that the Melville roof, for example, was absolutely part of the previous plan, as well as some of the other projects, though, in a different form because Hathaway and Melville did have planned improvements, which would come with their own HVAC system and therefore start to set up a systematic change for the entire school. We've simply just moved ahead with that without the addition. And it's important to be mindful that there has also been a change in the academic leadership of Portsmouth. You have a new superintendent who's bringing his own vision, which may be different than the previous one. And to move forward with large academic changes to your curriculum really requires his input and his vision as well.
So, yeah, my my only point on that was is to echo Chris is that, you know, while there was a lot of projects scheduled for the middle school in the last, in the last submission, the last approved submission, you know, we did not include those in this mission because, again, as Chris and Phil said, we we don't want to be doing renovations and then having to undo them if the district does decide that larger programmatic changes are needed, whether that's relocating grade five or how that works out additions. But the last thing we want to do is spend to spend the the town's hard earned money on on work that needs to be redone in just a few years.
With the Memorial Drive renovations and the reconfigured visitor parking filler, Chris, do you have that that number of additional parking spaces at the high school?
Twenty five.
Twenty five additional.
Additional. And as well as a sidewalk that runs the entire length.
Yeah. Should we use the turf field? I don't think a little larger picture of that.
Spend a lot of money on that B in the middle.
We'll we'll see if we can get that in before the ride submission.
Superintendent, does it sound as if they're making any major changes to this plan of schools? So if in the future you do readdress this idea of moving the fifth grade back to the elementary schools, this is doesn't affect that?
Right, as as I think was, you know, classified in the presentations, you know, health and safety focus, but also a do no harm focus in that we were going to make significant health and safety renovations, but also nothing that would, you know, stand in the way or spend money on something that needs to just be completely overhauled if we were to move forward at some point in the future, you know, with a larger school project. Correct. Melville part is partial roof replacement is the question. Yes.
All right. I think there are more questions.
From part two.
Part two. Hey, Mr. President, we've worked with our finance advisor, Steve Masrooney. He is aware of the school's plan. We asked him via our finance department to run some numbers so that we can see how this would affect our budget, how much this would cost in relation to our declining debt service. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Masrooney.
Good evening. Thank you, Rich, Council President, members of the council. As Rich said, my name is Steve Masrooney from Public Financial Management. Can everyone hear me? Great, thank you. We're going to talk a little bit about the the town's existing debt profile and then see what happens when the town layers in some school debt as well as other bonds. So if you could turn to slide three, please. Thank you. So the as as most of you know, the town is currently rated triple A by Standard and Poor's and double eight two by Moody's. As of June thirty, twenty twenty, the outstanding debt was approximately nineteen million. And you can see in the existing table below that there is a steady decline of debt service over the next few years. And what that decline allows is some capacity for new debt with with little impact on the operating budget. So if you turn to the next slide. What I prepared is what we call a Moody's MFRA. It's a Moody's financial ratio analysis. It's a pair analysis. So the rating agencies look at a number of things. And I've talked to the council over the years about these these areas. They look at finances, they look at governance, debt, pension, and tax base. But these are the ratios that they look at relative to debt. So what we did is we compared the town to their peers in Rhode Island, New England, and the nation. And these are the ratios they basically look at, debt to full value, debt per capita, debt as a percent of your operating expenditures, and then your payout of debt over the next ten years. And we looked at populations of fifty thousand or lower. And and this chart illustrates that you clearly have a favorable debt position when compared to your peers. Point six percent debt to full value is extremely low. Anything under two percent is considered low. Debt per capita, again, very low, one thousand one eighty four, well below your peers, both in Rhode Island, New England, and the nation. Debt service as a percent of your expenditures, again, below your peers. The ratio of payout is the only one where your peers are a bit higher, but the rating agencies just like to see fifty percent paid out over ten years. So again, well within the framework for for Moody's, for your your rating category. So you could turn to the next slide. So this this slide may look familiar when we when we talked to the council back in February, I think it was February, we had a similar slides, different scenarios. So what we assume is the project costs of the twenty one million, we assume base rate of thirty five percent share ratio, and then forty percent overall with the five bonus points, total aid approximately twelve point eight million. That's paid in two forms. You may recall with the changes in legislation a few years back, some of that aid is paid upfront in the form of pay as you go, and some is paid over time. The pay as you go portion allows the town to issue less bonds to finance the project. So based on your thirty five percent base share ratio, you're eligible for approximately one million, one point six million in pay go if approved. So we assumed a bond twenty two years, interest only during construction, and then the bond bond starts to amortize upon completion. We further assume fifty percent of the project would be complete in twenty twenty four and fifty percent in twenty twenty five. And that's why you can see the state aid starts to kick in in twenty five and twenty six. It's again, after substantial completion. And the end result is about eight hundred and twenty thousand per year in debt service, assuming a conservative rate of three point five percent. When we ran these back last year, we were running them at four percent, we ratcheted down a bit to three point five. This is still very conservative. Current rates are still, as many folks know, near historic lows. Those rates are expected to increase, I think, with inflation a bit, but still relatively low. But I think the three point five provides some cushion in the event that rates do rise. If you could turn to the next slide. So what does this mean tax rate impacting? And this is high level, pretty basic calculation, didn't want to get into too much of the nitty gritty with this, but the bottom line is based on your tax base of three point six billion, a home of two hundred and fifty thousand, that, you know, the impact is about fifty six dollars, and you can see on the graph, three hundred thousand dollar home, sixty eight dollars, and so on, for three fifty seventy nine dollars. It's twenty three cents on the tax rate, again, assuming a tax base of approximately three point six billion and debt service of approximately eight hundred and twenty two thousand. So you can turn to the next slide. So the question always comes up, and this came up a lot when we talked about the larger project of sixty five million dollars. You know, it's sixty five was a big number, and and some of the comments that we got was, does that crowd out the capacity for for other town projects? And I think we demonstrated back, you know, a year and a year and a half ago, that, you know, sixty five was a big number. It was probably at the top end of capacity for the town. I mean, the town is has a very low debt burden, as we talked about, but the sixty five million certainly was a big number. And then you factor in town needs, and, you know, it would be put a little bit of pressure on the operating budget. So what what I wanted to do is just simply illustrate that if you took a plain vanilla ten million dollar bond, amortize it for ten or twenty years at three point five percent, your existing debt service on that's about seven hundred thousand dollars. And if you turn to the next slide, I just want what we did is layered that onto the existing debt. School aside, we've already demonstrated that the cost to the school is twenty three cents. This is just simple illustration that it, let's say you didn't do the school, ten million, you have capacity for ten million with really no budget increase. Now, the school adds a little bit to the budget, but not much to the operating budget. So I think the bottom line is that even with twenty million in school bonds, there is still compat still capacity to do those other priorities on the town side. And this ten million dollars debt service illustrates that there is some capacity to do additional projects if needed. So I know that was quick overview, happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
On page eleven, the dark blue, the fact that the debt service on the proposed, what this whole is posing right now, or it does not?
I'm sorry, I have a little difficulty here hearing. The blue bars are just existing debt excluding school. So it's just that's exist, correct?
Okay. The light gray is just ten million dollars.
And then the light gray is the proposed just ten million dollars. So it's existing. So it's existing and a sample $10 million schedule, just to show you with that, that the town could absorb that with no impact. And again, if we if we layer on the school to this, then what you would see is that, for example, in 2024, when this, when the bond starts to hit or 2023, you know, you'd be up around 3.2 million. Yeah, essentially, not quite double, just because there is some state aid, but I think the difference was, you know, 822,000, if you go back versus 700,000. Correct. On a net debt. Correct. Yep. I'm sorry, I have difficulty hearing that question. I apologize. Yeah, again, a little bit difficult. The way the ride new program works over the past couple of years, again, it's two components. Upfront pays you go as well as overtime. So the upfront allows you to issue less debt. And then the overtime gets paid directly to Rhode Island Health and Ed, who issues the bonds on your behalf. I apologize if I'm not answering the question, counselor.
Bottom line is that the town could bond for more than what the school is bonding for. How much?
Correct.
Do you consider a reasonable debt service?
Yeah, so if we go back to our analysis that we performed back in February of 2020, we assumed just straight 65 million in school bonds with various reimbursement ratios. At that time, you know, we said there is capacity, everything's staying equal. If your fund balance stays the same, your debt, your pension levels don't elevate, you know, your tax base doesn't decline. You had capacity for the 65 million, but the question was that if you had other town initiatives and projects, it perhaps could squeeze out some of those where there wasn't much capacity for those those other projects. So what this analysis basically shows that you have capacity for 20 million. You have capacity for another 10 million with very little impact. Those ratios that I talked about on the previous page are extremely low. Point six percent debt to full value is extremely low. Again, you could go up to 2%. That's sort of the the high threshold for your rating category would be 2%. Debt to debt service as a part of the operating budget. That number is 3.9%, I believe, thank you, 3.9%. That number could be as high. I have some AA communities that are that have 8% of their operating budget. So there's some capacity there. When we when we tested the capacity back in February, 65 was pretty much the limit. There wasn't much else you could do, you may recall, when we talked about this. And Rich had us do some sensitivity on the rating and 65 was the high end of what was affordable. I shouldn't say affordable, what capacity the town had. So it was pushing up against the town's capacity. So I would say that that, you know, you probably have a little more room. If you issue 10 and 20 in school projects, you probably have another, perhaps 20 million of additional capacity that perhaps wouldn't impact your rating. Again, everything's staying equal. This this proposed, this proposed 20 million as well as the 10 did not change the your score. The rating agencies, you may recall some of the prior presentations, I would show you what what we call a score card. 20 and 10 on the existing debt did not change the score on your debt profile with Standard and Poor's or Moody's.
Correct. Technically, what what we're seeking tonight from the school department is approval to submit our stage two proposal. Right? We have a July 1 deadline now to do that. However, and, you know, obviously in full transparency, you know, the the price tag here of 21.4 million, we're assuming would require a bond. So we wanted to bring that information, you know, forward to you and, you know, have you be able to make an informed decision about approving the project. But there is still further discussion we could have on anything related to the bond. Is an important step before then is we'll submit to Ride by July 1st, but now we wait on them to approve, right? Just like last time, you know, we thought we had everything buttoned down, submitted a good proposal. And it wasn't until we submitted it and Ride started reviewing it that that you issue with the Melville property came to light. So there is still the potential, obviously, you know, that something like that could come out of left field. We think less so, you know, with with the projects we've chosen for this. But we're seeking your approval to submit. You know, it's kind of the last step that we need for that. Then we will submit by July 1st and wait to hear back from Ride.
Hello, I'm David Manoni. How do I sound? Can everyone hear me? Okay, okay, sorry about that. So like I said, I'm David Manoni and I thank you, members of the council, President Aguilar, for your time. I'm here to represent John and Margaret Carlon, who are applicant owner respectively, the property on Platt 31 Lot 4 on Dexter Street. The applicant wishes to move back to the property where his mother has been residing over the last 90 years and construct homes for his three children. In order to do so, he needs the property to be rezoned from its current zoning, which is commercial, to its, to the zone of residential R20. Currently, that the lot is non-conforming in use, as there are two existing dwellings on the lot. So the zone change would allow the lot to be conforming to use. Bring it into compliance with the zoning ordinance. I don't know if you have the the map that you can maybe bring up, everyone to see. Yeah. So as you can see there, the lot is about 2.8 acres in area. And there are currently two buildings on the property, both are dwellings, residential dwellings. And like I said, this is just simply a request to change his own from commercial to R20. Pretty, pretty simple. I don't know if there's more detail needs to be addressed at this moment, but I'm open for questions.
I mean, thank you, Dave. We also have the advisory opinion from the planning board. This was, I went through the public hearing of the planning board as well. favorable recommendation. Dave, you here?
I'm sorry, breaking up for me.
So you went to the planning board?
Yes, yes.
A favorable opinion?
Yes.
And this is only to change from the the commercial to R20?
Correct.
Then if that's approved, you would then go back for your subdivision and whatnot. That's all still, we're not here to discuss that.
Right, right. That's further detail is much more permitting and planning to go forward. I just want to let you guys know what the ultimate goal is, you know, show you, show us our hand.
No, appreciate that. Any, we have any questions?
Can you repeat that? R20 would allow for that, well, one, it matches what's surrounding, the surrounding areas, all R20. So I guess it would match the surrounding north, south and western properties. And also it allow for the applicant to potentially put in three more houses as he has three children. That's ultimately his goal. Yes, yeah. I think if you can go to the next slide, is there another, there was another plan set? I don't know if that was.
We don't, we don't have that.
Okay, all right, yeah. Ultimate, yeah, if if the geometry allows, where obviously this isn't a survey, the goal would be to extend Lisa Terrace into the property as a cul-de-sac. And you'd have four lots fronting on that and then the fifth lot with the existing dwelling would front on Dexter Street. Hi. Thank you for your time.
Now we will have our next public hearing, also for a zoning ordinance. Our three section B for zoning map, that'll come in on map 27, lot 2A, housing residential R20, light industrial, the ultimate goal merging map 53, lot 18J.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is William Dennis. I'm an attorney with offices located across the Mount Hope Bridge in Bristol, Rhode Island. I'm here tonight representing the applicant on this request for a zone change. Primarily, I'm here to introduce two presenters tonight. Mr. Neil Hingerani of Narragansett Engineering, who will discuss the parcel itself, the neighboring land uses and the proposed use and the lack of impact on the neighboring properties. The second presenter is JJ Sylvia III, Vice President and General Manager of International Manufacturing Services. He will talk about the company itself and their plans for expansion. So I will introduce Mr. Neil Hingerani.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. My name is Neil Hingerani. I'm the Principal of Narragansett Engineering, 3102 East Main Road in Portsmouth. So the application you have before you hear, the the core purpose is to apply for a zoning change of Platt 47 Lot 2A to turn this to a light industrial zone from what is currently R20. The parcel was owned previously by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. Our client purchased that in 2019. The property abuts Platt 53, lots 18J and 18D. Together, those comprise the land on which International Manufacturing Systems IMS is located. IMS is a Portsmouth business and a major employer. It was started in 1974 and it specializes in thick film resistors and similar electrical products. While this is a manufacturing facility, it is also a high tech business. There is no exterior unenclosed storage of materials and all work is confined predominantly to the interior of the facility. IMS is currently in the early stages of preparing for a business expansion. Their business is actively growing, something the proprietor JJ Sylvia will expand on briefly. The property also abuts Platt 53, lot 18J, located to the south. This is Terracotta Associates. This is also zone industrial, but is currently an active nursery. To the west, there are residential properties, but there is only one direct residential abutter, Platt 52, Lot 6A, which is 82 Schoolhouse Lane. We are displaying a 10-foot evergreen staggered buffer on this plan based on some prior discussions with the zoning officer. There's no particular standard for an industrial or residential buffer. So this is a sort of beefed up version of the typical commercial buffer from Article 4, Section 6C. But importantly, this is really a schematic note, just to highlight that we understand the need for a buffer. But any eventual expansions here for this application would require a special use permit, which would outline all relevant details such as sound and lighting to prove there would be no negative impact to the abutting properties. These elements were discussed at the planning board where we received a favorable recommendation for this application for the zone change. As discussed at planning, this is simply step one of the process. There are other applications which will need to be made for this process, as was outlined before, to administratively merge the parcels, design the buildings, accessory elements or the expansion accessory elements. And again, go to planning and zoning for a whole bite at the apple for approval. design the buildings, uh, accessory elements or the expansion accessory elements. Um, and again, go to planning and zoning, uh, for a whole bite at the apple, uh, for approval. Um, uh, just a brief note, um, the town's GIS map does show a small, uh, sort of leg on this property where, uh, fifty-three eighteen, uh, that Terracotta, uh, connects to Schoolhouse Lane, but, um, this is just a quirk of the GIS, uh, no such leg exists. Um, what you see here is, uh, illustrative of a class one survey we've performed at the condemnation, uh, for DOT. Um, uh, again, it should be noted that plat fifty-three lot eighteen J, the Terracotta property does maintain road frontage on multiple locations, uh, to the south, including Waterbrook and Garden Street. It's no issue with frontage, uh, for them. Um, at this point, I'd like to, uh, turn it over to, uh, JJ Sylvia.
Okay, can I be heard now? I'm not sure if it's working.
Yes, we got you.
Okay, great. Uh, council members, as you may know, uh, IMS has had a great relationship with both this council and our neighbors. Um, we're one of the long, uh, largest and longest tenured companies, uh, manufacturing in Portsmouth, which actually goes back to nineteen seventy-seven. I know Neil mentioned that we, uh, we've been around since seventy-four. We actually started in Middletown for, for a few brief years, but have been in Portsmouth since nineteen seventy-seven, which is, um, our main facility. Since that time, IMS has grown a couple of times from three thousand original square feet. Um, then we doubled and then doubled again in two thousand and three, uh, which is the last time we expanded to currently about twelve thousand square feet. Um, we're excited to have this prospect to be able to expand again, this time, uh, not to the east, towards the bank, but now to the west, uh, which of course requires this parcel in order to expand our technical operations. Um, some of the board members and even the virtual residents may not really recognize IMS, um, by name, uh, as a Portsmouth, uh, town, uh, despite our long history here, um, because we're relatively quiet, we're set back, uh, on Schoolhouse Lane. Um, and frankly, if you're not looking for the building, you probably drive by it a bunch of times and, uh, you don't realize it's there. Once you see it, then you see it every time. Um, but until then, we're, we're kind of out of the way and that's exactly how we like it. Um, our intention, of course, is to, um, even through proposed expansion, maintain that. Behind the walls of our facility is, um, actually a world-class electronic component plant, which Neil alluded to. Um, we develop high-tech components for circuit boards. That's our business. Um, but we also develop technology that actually improves the fabrication, equipment and machines that are required for some unique processes that actually makes this particular company kind of a standout in our industry worldwide. Um, small company here in Portsmouth, but we have a big footprint, um, as far as what our parts do, um, with such a small facility. Um, our parts are found in things like, uh, whether on Mars satellites, emerging automotive technologies and electronics that are all coming out with new cars and, and self-driving and all of that stuff, uh, defense systems and others. The parts we actually make are really small. Some of them pass through a table salt shaker. They're that small. Um, but they're all deemed, uh, critical for miniature electronics, especially for defense applications and communication systems. Um, so that's just a little background of really what is IMS. The name seems quite generic, but our parts are, are very specific to the industries we serve. Um, inside IMS, our production floor actually resembles more of what you might consider a medical lab, uh, than when you picture a manufacturing plant with smoke stacks and smoke and all those kinds of things coming out. Um, we're more not technically clean room, but clean areas, microscopes, batches of electronics materials, instruments, lasers, uh, and thick film equipment is primarily what we, uh, populate in our manufacturing spaces. And as Neil referred, um, it's all quite enclosed and very controlled. Our process is quite sensitive. Um, it's very clean by design and frankly, we emit less noise, traffic odors and pollution than probably a coffee shop. So we're both very proud of that and we know that that makes for good neighbors. Um, at the moment, we employ, um, just over forty people, many from Aquinic Island and surrounding communities. Uh, but as I mentioned, we ship to some thirty countries around the world. And, um, of course, we're very proud of that and we, we think it's kind of special to be here in Portsmouth. Um, you may notice that the property be rezoned is actually held by IMS Holdings. Um, this is something I know that was mentioned in the planning phase. Um, IMS Holdings, um, is the controlling entity of the lot to be rezoned. Yet we've been spending all this time speaking about, um, the expansion for IMS, the company. So yes, there are two different Rhode Island entities, Rhode Island business entities, but just for purposes of everyone listening, um, that may have the question, they're under the same control. IMS Holdings LLC was a mechanism used to purchase the lot originally from the state of Rhode Island with the sole intention of merging and the eventual abutting properties into one light industrial zoning. And then that would support the IMS facility expansion and planning. Although the new lot, um, as Neil mentioned, was used for light industrial purposes since around nineteen thirty through the state. Um, around nineteen sixty-five, it was zone residential and it never went back, but I guess the state doesn't have to follow the rules. So substantially this square footage or acreage, um, has been a light industrial use, although it was never officially zoned that way. Hence, we're here today, um, seeking to correct that so we can, um, use that. And if you look at the map, it, it basically is missing that notch of, of land for what's otherwise a contiguous light industrial zone. Um, speaking as the IMS VP and General Manager, I can attest that the light industrial zoning of the lot, um, with that industrial zoning, uh, approved, IMS intends to use the new facility square footage to allow for increased capacity for our current product demand. Essentially, we need to hire, produce and sell more of what we already do. The expansion offers us added benefit of permitting more spacing with our employees, um, and resizing some of the departments to fit equipment, which will help us grow. Um, I know COVID nineteen has dropped all the time. We've learned kind of the hard way that what we thought was an inappropriate level of density, uh, for what's square footage we needed to operate. Um, well, we kind of have a different view of that now. Um, and certainly with expansion, that will allow us, um, to not be so dense with how we populate machines and incur any other complications from a public health perspective, which of course we're all quite aware of is, um, is very important, especially in times like we've experienced. Um, IMS has no plans to radically change or diversify our existing operation. And again, this is something I'm bringing up because of some questions and answers from planning. Um, we are not intending to put in a symbol manufacturing company or an air horn testing facility. We intend to do exactly what we have always done, um, just with added comfort, higher headcount and a higher capacity for our existing operation and factory output, make more stuff. Um, so hopefully that gives you a little context and what it is that we actually do for many board members. Perhaps you, you've heard the name, you've maybe seen the building and always wondered, I don't know what they do in there. Well, that's what we do. Um, you're certainly always welcome. Any board member that would like to have a tour or come visit us, you're, you're more than welcome to do so. Um, and that's really what I wanted to be able to add to the proceeding on behalf of the IMS team, its directors and ownership. Uh, we thank the board for your consideration on the matter tonight, and we know this represents a real critical step in our continued growth here in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Hey. Any questions, comments from the council? So.
I can't hear you, Kevin.
So the advisory opinion, council, it states that, uh, IMS purchased this property in the state of nineteen ninety-nine. But I think I heard it was two thousand and nineteen, which.
Uh, yeah, two thousand nineteen, uh, was the, the year it was purchased. That is correct.
Um, okay, let's go to, if you guys have one. One hundred feet.
Kevin, we can't hear you at all online.
The person online hasn't been unmuted yet. Close, I'm using.
Asking.
Uh, hello, um, Wondery, uh, you can unmute yourself. I don't know. Is there anything in the question?
Close, President Davis, I'll ask a quick question. This Sylvia, obviously, the main concern is with the residential lot throughout the west and being kitted with a solid buffer for them. It may be a big shock to go from an empty lot, generally an empty lot to a lot now that they partner on an actual building. So I just ask that you be respectful as possible, find as negative a buffer as you can.
Think, um, again, um, there is going to be a process, uh, by which the, um, facility expansion will need to be designed. I have to, uh, imagine both the planning and zoning board will be, um, very sensitive to this, uh, as are we again, since we've uh, already taken some time to schematically show this buffer, uh, at this super early stage. So again, yes, very sensitive, um, to the effects on the abutters and duly noted.
May I, Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, I have to say, it's, it's really hard to argue against this because you guys present a, a very good case and I'm very supportive of IMS in concept. And I think looking at this, you know, by itself, there's really nothing to say against it. But, you know, if I take a step back and I look at what is in the best interest of the town in the long term for the, the health and well-being and quality of life of its residents, I think, um, converting residential zoning to light industrial and expanding light industrial and manufacturing footprint in what is essentially a residential neighborhood is a, a bad trend. Um, and I'm, I'm not supportive of that, of that trend in general. I'm very supportive of the business in and of itself and your expansion, but, you know, we convert all that to light industrial, what happens in ten years if you outgrow that and decide you need to move bigger facility? Then we have, um, this entire light industrial facility on a residential neighborhood with families and kids living down the street and, and what can come in their necks. So I think it's just a bad, um, a bad trend and I don't like us seeing us, you know, changing zoning from residential to light industrial. And I understand that you say it was been used for light industrial purposes, but I'm looking at satellite imagery back to like thirty years and it's been like a grassy field um, for the last thirty years. So it's, it's, it is a different use. I think it, it will have an impact on the neighborhood. It will increase traffic and it's great for Portsmouth. But this is a residential neighborhood and, and I think we have a unfortunately long history of having, you know, shoehorning residential, um, lot in the middle of where they shouldn't be. Um, and it's, it's a trend that I think we need to get away from and it, it causes issues and buffering is great, but you know, we're gonna buffer ourselves to death in this town with the way our, our zoning is going and I'm, I'm really not in favor of it. So.
Thank you. Sure, comments. Now we, we just can't get to, uh, wander.
What, what time does IMS open? Do you twenty-four hour facility or close at eleven? What's the opening hours? What time are people there? Driving cars, deliveries, dispatches, et cetera?
JJ, uh, if you would unmute yourself and probably tackle that one.
I'm sorry, I, I can't actually hear the question that was answered. I heard something about a delivery, I think, and I, I didn't quite catch it.
What time are you guys open? Are you twenty-four hour facility, do you close at eleven? What time are people coming and going, driving cars? Deliveries, dispatches of materials?
Yep, our, our, um, so with respect to the deliveries, I think that's definitely a good point. Um, our deliveries are FedEx UPS. Um, those end by about four thirty PM. Our earliest deliveries are usually around nine AM. Um, they're relatively infrequent and if you can imagine, um, our parts are tiny. So our entire shipping and receiving usually fits in the UPS driver's arms for entire, uh, entire shipment week. So, um, that's light footprint. In reality, the operation, um, in terms of the scale that would, um, that would be in consideration for expansion, that won't really change that much. Um, it's more or less having you have one truck and we have, you know, five envelopes, maybe we'll have seven perhaps in the future, but I don't anticipate that the traffic or anything related to the commercial, uh, access to the property will really change at all, um, with the prospect of ex- expansion. I don't know if that's answering your question. I think I heard it correctly.
That's partially is, but how about your employees? What's the shift change? Is there gonna be a building on this property with parking lot with people driving in and out?
So I understand that question for sure. Um, right now we have forty-one employees. Um, with, again, it's a little pro forma because without the zoning in our back pocket, we really didn't spend a lot of time with a very mature plan. Um, but we know that the lot would be able to allow us for expansion of our manufacturing side of the building. Um, as far as headcount is concerned, I would estimate that that will increase from forty to perhaps fifty or perhaps slightly over fifty. Um, that would be five to ten additional vehicles, um, for first shift. Um, and to answer the original question that I do remember, uh, we operate from seven thirty in the morning to four thirty in the afternoon for our first shift. And we have a short second shift that is, uh, a, like an eight or nine person crew, uh, that's here till about eleven PM, sometimes midnight. Um, so the after-hours operation is very, very small by comparison to the first shift operation, which would obviously be, uh, required for the expansion part. That's the, um, that's the desire for those additional pieces of equipment that we would be able to install.
And I have a couple of sure legal questions. I'm sorry, I'm not more knowledgeable of zoning, but two concerns that I've heard raised are, one, you guys are great. What happens if you leave? Um, is there any way for the zone, for there to allow them to do what they want to do, but not have a zoning designation that allows something much, um, less desirable to happen? Because that's one question in the future. Or to these guys. And secondly, is this zoning change, uh, necessary to allow them to do what they want to do? Can they get some kind of, I don't know, temporary exemption that allows them to continue their? And, and because if they, if they change their operations and become aggressively offensive to their neighbors, are we, once we designate them as R20, unable to stop them from, um, changing, morphing into something different? So those are my two questions.
All right, um, I'll, I'll put my zoning out.
Yeah.
The zoning designation goes to the property. So once, if we, if we were to change this from R20 to light industrial, it's light industrial and light industrial is entitled to whatever is allowed under our zoning workings, uh, providing the need to set that. This, I think, would be predicated on, if it's changed to light industrial, I think they've got to merge the lots at minimum in order to expand because you have a property line in between. So I'm guessing that the expansion is based on your interior footprint of your building. It sounded like you can only go to the west based on your operations because clearly you have plenty of room, uh, to the south or to the east. But that probably requires you to reconfigure your internal operations, which may not be cost effective. I'm, I'm just speculating. Um, so I, I think the, the answer is no, we can't, we cannot allow, um, a merger of light industrial and residential lot. If, if the lots would be merged in order for them to complete their expansion because they have a cross.
So once we turn, so once we approve the R20 designation, is it a change?
Yep.
If their operations change significantly so that they become really annoying to neighbors?
Well, they, I think the point was that, as you're running, it's this required special use permit. So the zoning board, and if you go through the planning and zoning process, this, they could go under a special use permit where there's a criteria for special use, is there's. there's seven D criteria that they would have to meet. And noise, odor, smoke, objectional features are all part of that special use criteria. The zoning board has the ability to place special conditions. But those conditions would only be for their particular application. If they chose to pack up and sell the property, the overall property is light industrial. And anybody coming in would also be subject probably to zoning special use permit, depending on what their operations are. So I, I know that there's some concern. I personally don't think that by adding this additional piece of, if it were to be converted, if it were to be approved, I don't really think that this points to dangers of property switching to light industrial would have really any adverse impact. I think historically, historically it was used by the TBW for the DOT as a material storage stockpile area. And, and I know it is a concern because when you make a zoning change, right? But we just saw earlier tonight, we just converted commercial to residential. So, you know, I still think we're ahead. I still think we're ahead in residential.
Except that there's a big difference, right? We converted commercial to residential, even though it's surrounded by residential. Here we're going the opposite direction.
I, I understand. I, I would also go again, commercial, this is a light industrial area right next to it. It's got light industrial on two sides of it. So, you know, I, this isn't, I think, an overreach for this, this square to be added into light industrial. You've got much bigger parcel rate to the south. It's, it's light industrial that if they decide they want to do something there, you, you've got a much bigger issue because that's 27, 48 acres. So, you know.
Exactly. So why would you add to the issue?
Because we have a, we have a business owner in town, been in town for a number of years, that has proven to be a good neighbor and is looking to expand his operation, which has very low impact. And, and I, it's just my opinion, one of the stuff, just my opinion. I, I don't see any harm in this, but that's, again, just my opinion. And I was supportive.
Can they build on that site, a decent lot and request a variance rather than changing the zoning permanently?
Well, you cannot. I don't want to do it here, but you cannot get a use variance to go from residential to light industrial. It's really hard to meet, meet the variance criteria. You have to show that there's no other use of that parcel, which clearly anybody could say, well, it's 26 acres and you could do something else on that parcel. The applicant is fully intending here, he's, you know, that he wants to merge those two parcels together in order to expand his own operation, which by all accounts, most people have no idea what he was doing. And he's a very low impact, you know, you know, I, I think against. It's his request. It's up to us to render a decision. But you cannot, you cannot, special condition, all of them. It's either becomes light industrial and merges them together, or it is not in its stage. Residential, but you can't, you can't cross the line that's there. That's all. Mr. Gav, I think is online, so hopefully if I said anything wrong, give me my zoning correction.
I would like to draw the council's attention to this small parcel. If it were ever developed as a residential property, it would be bounded on two sides by industrial uses. As it's configured right now, and as council pointed out, the acreage to the south is also large area of light industrial. So if this lot were ever developed as residential, it would have Schoolhouse Lane on one border and two industrial uses on other boundaries.
Correct. It's zoned light industrial, but it currently is operated as a farm. So just to be clear.
Also, the owner, when they were getting into it, it's not like the poor residential property that was next to a residential vacant lot.
And one small data point I could add is I did have a conversation with the zoning officer. Tried to research. I think my client had some idea that this may have been industrial in the past. We couldn't find any hard proof to that. But, you know, the zoning officer didn't have any explanation as far as, you know, when or why this, this property was zoned residential? Or if it, it had, there had been a past light industrial, a zone applied to this. It just couldn't, couldn't kind of support what the current zoning was and why it was that way. I hate to speak, you know, a secondary perspective, but we just didn't get a lot out of that conversation in terms of what, what the history was. But we did try to research it. We couldn't find anything specific on, on that history there.
What, Mrs. Linda, what conversations have you had with the abut?
Yeah, we have had conversations with the, the spanners, which are the, the property in question. There's some connection between some employee, one of our, our vice president of sales, actually, and then personally, which, which was very convenient. We've actually kept them involved along with the terracotta light industrial, which would be the other main abutter to the property. We involved them before we actually purchased the lot so that we could kind of loop them in on what our intention was, being that it was a little nebulous about who may be interested at the time that the state had put it up for sale. So I, I think that, you know, we're trying to make some effort. IMS has tried to make some effort to keep them involved in the process. I, I don't think there was any direct objective, I mean, objection from the spanners along the way. They had expressed directly to us outside of any of the planning and zoning procedures, a lot of the same things that you guys are talking about now with respect to the buffer. And, and that's why I think Neil was very keen to point that out even in this description. I may also point out that in the nature of our expansion, we're expanding from the existing building. This is not designed to be a separate facility location for walls with parking around it. We're looking for the square footage to expand, which means the area that is between the expanded building that would, you know, come about and that residential line, that represents the area that would be the least developed. There might be a driveway access for any additional parking we put in. But with respect to lighting and, and actual construction, everything is designed to be centered more towards the existing lot, 18J side, leaving that other section apart from the buffering to be relatively undeveloped. That's at least in concept what we're doing. So as Neil said, all of these details, of course, are so pro forma. I hesitate to get into a lot more detail, but in principle, that's why we're interested in this effort. And certainly in, when we're talking specifically about the abutter on the opposite side of the vegetative screen, they've been involved actually before we made any attempt for the rezone, kind of in concept, to make sure they understood what our intentions were and we could work with them at that time. That's been our plan and that's what we plan to do going forward through the design phase.
Have you expressed opposition to your standing?
They did not. So long as they, again, were kept in the loop, I think they felt relatively comfortable. They were also concerned when we, when we were investigating the property, there was some traffic there at one point because of storage of whatever. And that was obviously an issue that, that we had when we were looking at the property. Because I know there was, there was materials that were stored there. There was sand and salt and there were guardrails at one time and bales and it was a dump. When we actually acquired the property, we had to spend quite a bit actually to get it to look like the mode lot that was referred to before. It was, there was a lot of dumping of concrete and blocks and it was not very attractive. So straight away, they were happy. We, we cleaned it all up. And I think that they're, they're happy to be involved in the process going forward.
I apologize. I know you guys mentioned this already, but why is it then expanding to the south or the east is not an option?
Yeah, um, there's a lot of details that go into that, but essentially, based on the water management of features that are there and also the way that the septic system and water is designed, the expansion of, from the building section towards those other locations are not feasible for us. If they were, they probably would have done it already. We were kind of stuck in our shell here until the state property that allowed us for that expansion side was available. And also to echo a comment that I did hear from one of the council members, the side that is the abutting side to this lot to A, that is our operating side. That's our manufacturing side of the building, if you will. So being able to expand on that side towards what was a property boundary would give us almost immediate additional square footage without having to reconstruct the entirety of the manufacturing and operation side, which is the technical end, which is an enormous advantage for us to be able to do this in a time scale that, that, you know, makes sense and also to not completely shut down operations for an extended period.
Saying on the same topic, they can't see there is very few circular control. No, they, they, they can't expand. They can't expand on the property without crossing that property. But again, they, and I have no idea what your future expansion would look like, but it would have to also conform to the other setback, which that now becomes another property line that you're gonna have to deal with. So again, this, this thing does, if this were to be approved, it's step one in a process of going before design review, planning board, and zoning board. So I still think that there's layers that need to be addressed. And I believe that our planning and zoning board would also take that into consideration with the abutters through the special use process. So, you know, I don't know what else to add to this, you know, from a testimony or from a presentation standpoint, not really testimony. But again, I, I, I feel comfortable with it, understanding what you're looking to do. I, you know, I encourage anyone else to ask questions or comments, you know, bring that up at this time while we're still in the public hearing.
Mrs. Linda, one other question. How much additional traffic will your expansion create?
The question is regarding traffic due to expansion. I'm not sure I quite.
And how many employees are you adding? How many more shifts?
Yeah, um, we won't be adding shifts. We'll be able to expand primarily on the first shift. That's the technical shift where we, we use most of that testing equipment. We're looking, we believe that our head, headcount can expand by about 10. So I think I had mentioned this in one of my prior answers, but it wasn't directed. We will probably need about five more parking spaces to accommodate the head, the headcount that would be associated with the square footage expansion. It's the machines, uh, square footage that's really of the primary need for a big to-do with the expansion. And obviously, we'll need people to run them, but we don't need 25 more people to accommodate the added expansion. The expansion is relatively mild. There's not a lot of space to expand. I think in the early stages, we're looking at something like 6,000 to 7,000 square feet on a 12,000 square foot existing facility. So if you think about that in terms of the manufacturing side, that about doubles our square footage, but that does not double our manufacturing headcount in order to operate that equipment. That would be approximately 10 more, five to 10 more people on first shift and perhaps two more people on second shift, relatively small.
Mr. President, just one question to you. So again, I don't have a problem with what Russelian's been saying. His operation will do. I guess my problem is, as this advocate has said, once you change this zoning and if they leave, what controls will we have that something that just doesn't fit in a residential neighborhood won't plump itself down?
You have is your zoning board. You have your zoning board review and your planning board. That's what you have. But, you know, there's, there's no guarantees. We have, we have a business that's been in town since, what, 1977? And they are, they, it sounds like they want to stay in town and they are looking for any expand their building. Six or seven, approximately, so you said 6,000 square feet? You know, so, I mean, again, you still have to conform to some of the setbacks on that lot. So, I mean, you're probably looking at some type of rectangular addition in the front half of your building and the past of your building, correct?
That's correct.
And then, you know, about the size of it, you're talking something that's like 40 by 6,000 square feet? I don't know.
I, I think that was, for planning purposes, I think we can accommodate somewhere between 40 by 80 and 60 by 80 or something in that regard. That's somewhere between 4,800 and 7,000 square feet. I don't remember exactly what we, what we had done at that time. But yes, much like we did in the first expansion of IMS from 3,000 to six, we've kind of just, we doubled the building and then we built the second one. As you notice on, well, it's hard to see on the plan, but the buildings were offset in order to accommodate existing structures. And I'm sure we'll have to consider a novel way to connect them due to the constraints of the, of the lot. And as Neil, as Neil said, we'll, we'll have a lot to discuss in the further planning stages in order to make sure we're conforming to the light industrial rules that would apply to the lot that is dissolved, but also the use, the use case and exactly what we're doing on that site and how it pertains or differs to our current operation, which again, as a GM, I can tell you, there is no plans to do anything differently than what we've been doing here for 40, 45 plus years.
And again, just to go back to the use regulations briefly, both elements into the zoning ordinance that allow manufacturing in a light industrial zone do require a special use permits. And again, attorney Dennis, if I'm speaking out of school, please correct me, but that would only be viable for their specific use and their specific business. And if they were to close up shop, move, change their operations substantially, that would require a new special use permit in which all these elements, outdoor lighting, landscape, buffer, parking, sound, et cetera, et cetera, would need to be reviewed and modified and/or approved by the planning and the zoning board.
Any new activity, whether this applicant or a subsequent owner would be subject to that same control in development plan, special use permit, et cetera. That's why the municipalities have this control to consider the neighbors and to study exactly what impact the activity may have on the neighborhood.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't think we can get Wanda to stand it up. I don't know what that was. We can't mute it, you know? We don't have that, it could be accidentally. Wanda, if you're there and can hear us, could you call in and if you have a comment or a question, type it into the question and answer possibly? I mean, I do want to add that there was also public hearings for the planning board as well. And we did get a favorable opinion from the planning board. If this is a public hearing, I want to give a quick one opportunity to speak. Andrew Zem, you did. Yeah, so Wanda, if you can hear us and you, you have a comment or a question, could you raise your hand again? I just want to know. Wanda, if you're out there trying to reach us, our phone number is 1-888-788-0099. If you do, if you're dialing in, you also need the meeting number. The quickest way, if you guys have questions, you can type it in. The meeting ID though is 9968471996. I'll just give you some, a few more minutes. I appreciate everyone's patience. We're trying to be fair. Mr. President, have, have, have to cut off, uh, speed with this. Yes, I'm making a motion to close the public hearing. Do you have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Close the public hearing. All those favor.
Mr. DeFusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Budbar?
Aye.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Now on the main item, which is the one we're going to amend.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to convert the lot to a question from presidential.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Mr. DeFusa? It's really hard for ratings. I do believe that we should not be converting residential zoning to industrial. However, this is a fair, it's a very small lot in a specific circumstance. It feels acceptable just in this case. However, it's a terrible, it's not a good thing for our town to have this patchwork. We'd like to rehearse it. But aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Abbott?
May.
Budbar?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. Aye, thank you. And you're all set, folks? Thank you.
Thank you.
Go on to.
Thank you.
Is playing. Request approval of the town administration's contract July 1st.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Budbar?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rader?
Aye.
Locked in. Okay, next, we have a request to award the new design we've called boat ramp and pier.
Good evening, council president, members of the council. Can you hear me okay?
Far better than everybody else.
Town council president, members of the council, the town awarded a grant for the new, was awarded a grant for the new boat ramp design and the pier improvements that Weaverco Boat Ramp. We went out to RFP and all the proposals were reviewed by a panel utilizing the qualification-based selection. The review panel ranked GZA the highest out of the four firms and the review panel respectfully requests the new design for Weaverco Boat Ramp and Pier Approvements to be awarded to GZA. Thank you.
All the favor?
Mr. DeFusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Budbar?
Aye.
Captain?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Finally, under number, new business number five, it's a request approval for 1009, only one taxes, 16,000, $60.
Dr. Ryan, second.
All the favor?
Mr. DeFusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Budbar?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have four months.
Approved to receive place on five. Say anything.
All those in favor?
Mr. DeFusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Budbar?
Aye.
Captain?
Aye.
Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And next, it's our future meetings. Our next regular meeting is June 7, 7:00 PM, followed by July 12. I understand.
And we'll send motions for jury. Give me a second.
Mr. DeFusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Budbar?
Aye.
Christian, do you want to talk?
Yeah.
Kenah, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. My name is Christian Sullivan, 799. You need to, I had a quick question on one of the correspondence. I, I don't know if that's a, the thing we bring up, if it's heard again, but it's the advisory opinion on the solar ordinance, the one that was requested in. I just had a couple of questions on that document.
We would have to bring that up at, at our order. We would have to bring that up at the next meeting.
Sure. Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure my, you know, I didn't get put aside. There will be a chance to have questions about that.
Yeah, that is a counselor, like, that can be added to our agenda.
Make a motion that we add that to our next agenda?
I appreciate that. Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. My last name Sullivan. Yeah, sorry. You guys are kind of hard to hear sometimes. It kind of cuts in and out as everyone goes down the mic less there, so.
So I believe this hour will put this on the agenda for.
Oh, for the next, sorry, you cut out again there, Keith. So it will be put on the agenda for the, the next meeting?
Twenty eight.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You know what? The man that thought it's motions.
So, I have, I have, Mr. Budbar, I'm Mr. Mount. Mr. Dean? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Rader?
Aye.